Do you sound clear?
Great.
Okay. So Zoom has informed us we're being recorded. Okay. And Mr. Mayor, you are ready also, is that correct? Mr. Mayor, Mayor Briggs?
Yes, sir. I'm ready.
Okay, ready to go. Ready to go. Okay, so here we go. All right, so gavel struck. Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg, Monday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty one town meeting. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We have our future meetings listed as the planning commission will meet on Monday, June twenty eighth at seven thirty P M. That will meet via Zoom. The town council, our next meeting will occur on July twelfth. It's delayed because of the holiday weekend. And that will occur at seven thirty at sorry, in the community building, but also via Zoom at the moment. We might discuss that tonight. The Board of Appeals meeting will occur on Monday, July nineteenth at two thousand and twenty one at seven thirty. And the Citizens Advisory Board Committee will also meet on July twentieth at seven thirty P M. The location will be determined. Are there any other meetings to share? Doesn't sound like it. Okay. So I'll move on. Okay. So. My hope is everyone's had the opportunity to look at the minutes from the June seventh meeting. Are there any modifications anyone would like to see in place? Okay, hearing none. There is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from June seventh, two thousand and twenty one as presented?
Commissioner.
Make a motion.
Yep. I'm sorry, Mr. Ritz. Go ahead, sir.
I I was just gonna say I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Burns. Okay. So the motions made by Commissioner Ritz, it's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Ritz absent at this time. I'm sorry, Commissioner Sweeney absent at this time, pardon me. Okay, we move on. A deputy, we are asking at this time for the sheriff's report, please.
All right, good evening. Deputy White House Sheriff's Office, this is the meeting minutes for May two thousand and twenty one. There were eight disorderly conduct calls and eight noise complaint calls. Those were think the bulk of those were both on the the addresses there on South Seaton that we've gotten several calls on. So I'm just touching on that. There's particular addresses on South Seaton. Both parties have peace orders against each other, and they also have trespass letters against each other. So that's pretty much all we can do about that right now. There were eighteen nine one one calls. Let's see what else we had. A bunch of patrol checks, school safety checks. We actually got in couple bike patrols. We had twenty stops, twenty traffic stops. There were seven crashes. I think like six of the seven actually needed reporting reported done. So special assignments. I had the town meeting. I asked what tended a cruiser, a cruiser competition at the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office in West Virginia. And I attended roll call. For the additional information, there were seventeen request officer calls. There were two overdose calls, which ended up being opioid overdoses. The victims were not cooperative. They didn't want to give us any information that. And as I have also have on here, the ongoing disputes on South Seaton Avenue, which I said all parties have peace orders and trespass letters against each other. We did receive the speed complaint today for West Main Street. Actually Deputy Ahal is on tonight. It's his first day back with us this evening in a while, and he's actually out there right now as we speak, making traffic stops at that location. And there will be three of us up here for Heritage Days this coming weekend will be on pretty much from from opening to close. So we will be here. Any questions for me at this time?
No questions for the deputy? Okay, very good.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Oh, just quickly, how did the competition go in Jefferson County, the cruiser competition?
Very good. We actually I actually placed third in the Mark Cruiser competition out of like twenty, I believe, twenty or twenty five mark other Mark Cruisers in the surrounding area. So not bad. It did rain a little bit, though.
Congratulations. That's exciting.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, so we now move to our next item. We turn to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Burns.
Thank you and good evening. Kind of keep these brief. I know we just had a meeting two weeks ago, but on behalf of myself and family, send you know, a lot of thoughts and prayers towards the Phelan family as well as Mount St. Mary's family with the passing of the legend that is Jim Phelan. I don't think there's anybody that's been around Emmitsburg for the last fifty years that hasn't come across Coach Phelan as well as his as his family. And I know he and Dottie have had a major impact on everything that goes on in town as well as the surrounding community. So it's a great loss for the community with his passing. Additionally, congratulations to the Cattockton High School baseball team and winning state championships. It's great to see a town represented on the state scale with two state championships in the last two years with football and baseball. That's an unbelievable accomplishment for those student athletes. And it reflects very highly on their coaches as well as the parents and all those that help support them and travel throughout the state and all over. It's a it's a huge labor of love for those that support those student athletes. And congratulations to those athletes that'll be moving on and playing at the next level. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Commissioner Ritz?
Yes, to echo what Commissioner Burns said, I had planned on saying that this evening, too. Truly, truly a loss for the for Mount St. Mary's and for the community of Emmitsburg in general. Coach Phelan, Dottie and family certainly were true members of the Emmitsburg community. And it's a real loss. So condolences to the family and I'm hoping it's long overdue, but I really do hope that Coach one day makes it into the Naismith Hall of Fame. I attended the grand opening of Mason Dixon Mixon store, which is in the Silo Hill Strip Mall between Subway and China Walk. The banana caramel shake was really good. We have they have some smoothies there shakes, some teas and whatnot. So so go check it out. Did pop into Ripley's Believe It or Not Ice Cream, which is scheduled to open in the near future. Looking forward to trying the Double Dog Dare flavors. Sounds really interesting. I really hope that they thrive here as well. And there was one other thing. Oh, I know what it was. I guess congrats to the baseball team. And also I wanted to to state, I thought it was great that the I'm assuming the V H C was behind it, but they had that parade for Cattockton's graduates. The graduates this year truly had a unique last two years of their high school experience. And I thought that was really neat to see them go by. I didn't even know it was planned. It just happened to hear a bunch of commotions that that was really neat. So thanks for whoever organized that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, good evening. I got a couple quick things. Again, this past weekend, we had or two weekends ago, I guess, was the second part of the the big baseball tournament and the town was packed. Hotel was full. It was just just great for the town. We did have a little parking problem, but we've already started to work on that and think we found a way for some other organizations to make a little money off of this tournament and helping with parking. So we're working on that. Two other projects that I'm working on and trying to get get some information is a speed camera project for the east end of town. I'm working with the the town of Thurmont, who has one in their school zone. And it's helped with the with speeding a whole bunch down there. So as we spoke, they don't make a lot of money off of it, but it's not about money. It's about slowing the cars down for the safety of our of our kids and the residents of the east end of town. So that's something I'll have more to report on. And the other thing I'm looking at is to try to find out what overtime would cost for deputies. Yeah, I know we can't afford another one, but there could be some prime times that we would like to have a have a deputy working some some late nights just to just to show a presence. And yeah, what I'm thinking about right now would be when when the university comes back in the in the fall or the late summer to, you know, have a little bit of extra patrol and trying to figure out in case we come up with some extra budget money that we could throw towards that. So I have more on that. The other thing, of course, Coach Phelan, I feel kind of kind of bad because when I was working down on the fields for the tournament, I it I remembered that Coach Phelan was the first president of the Emmitsburg Little League. And I was going to, I'm going to ask to have this put on the agenda in the future that we we named that field. I was hoping to do it in his honor. I was hoping, you know, to do it, you know, not knowing he was going to pass so quickly, but that's something that I'm going to ask to have put on the agenda here in the next month or so. And along with the baseball team, we had a local young lady, Jenna Zentz, who placed took the state championship in a four hundred meter track. She lives up in Brookfield. And we're trying to get the some representatives from the track team as well as the the baseball team to be in the parade this Saturday. So while we didn't get to participate in the the parade Saturday night that was held in Thurmont, we're we'll do our own thing and we hope to have both of those teams here in town on Saturday. That's all I got. Sorry so long.
No, that's excellent. All all very good stuff, all very positive stuff and important. For myself, I was there side by side with Commissioner Ritz at the Mason Dixon Mixon Grand Opening. It was a very nice event. It's interesting that the products they have, it's it's not just like refreshment, but it's also recovery drinks, health drinks. They really have a strong product there. Ripley's poked in there, had a very nice conversation with them, looking forward to their walk up service opening. And the nice part there is they intend to be there and expand their operation in time. So they will have more offerings beyond ice cream, hopefully within a year. Congratulations to the the new comic book shop, Wookiee Walker. They're up and running. They're going to have a grand opening in July. If you're not aware of them, I think all the commissioners are. I know that they are. But they are a comic book shop also in the strip mall by Silo Hill. And they have a pretty unique offering. And if you notice the trend here, each of these shops, it's homegrown. Okay, these are local shops and we really need to support our local businesses. And the brilliant thing is each of these are niche stores. They're not competing with the box stores. So they've taken the chance and we really need to support them. So let's hope we do that. Where does there's a pizza parlor, we hope coming where Stavros had been. Moving beyond that, I attended the program open space meeting with Mayor Briggs. We were able to negotiate with other communities for the funding available and really through Mayor Briggs's efforts, we were able to bring home some significant money for park projects. Looking forward to those. As Commissioner Davis mentioned, Community Day is coming up on Saturday. Sorry, Community Heritage Day, sorry. And it is going to be interesting. It's the first get together we'll have had after the COVID lockdowns, so it should be fun. And I will shamelessly plug the Beer Garden that is a fundraiser for the Friends of the Emmitsburg Library and for trail support. So I look forward to seeing everyone from the board and the mayor and staff having a refreshing cold one if they choose to in the beer garden. And with that, I conclude my remarks. Thank you. So we move on. Mr. Mayor, we turn to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. With everybody here, commissioners in the town, everybody of condolences to the failing family of in my life, I played football, but I had the opportunity to be three Hall of Fame coaches, Coach Trump, almost on a daily basis down at the University of Kentucky, Morgan Wood at DeMatha. And he coached football against the team I played in his basketball and then Jim Phelan. It's just quite an honor to you know, just to meet these people and see them in their family settings. Jim First was a great family man. Husband and father. Cattockton baseball, it's just stunning. Pulled that off this year, bringing that home where maybe we'll try to have you in here when we get our office opened. I was out there at the smoothie shop and the day of the opening, I did like I had a conflict, couldn't get there for the opening, but and we're we're looking forward to the other stores opening up. We had another funeral today of bar for Barbara Weed, Barbara Van Breakle Weed. She passed away in the winter months, but their family pulled it together. She has a very large family, a historic family here in Emmitsburg, Gettysburg and Washington, D.C. Just a wonderful family. She was one of the first to break a the color line, the glass ceiling in a religious order becoming a Franciscan sister to work with the poor and in Brazil, then with the Indians up in Utah, later came back here and married Richard Weed, lived in Emmett Gardens, a wonderful person, eighteen years executive secretary for Mount President and there. And so we we have two funerals, Coach Phelan's funeral be this Thursday at the university. Please get details if you'd like to attend. I think they're and see how that works. We did very well with their program. We call Project Open Space, my POS money. We went in with the empty cup. We came back with a half empty cup. We got a hundred forty seven thousand dollars out of for the bathroom at concession stand. But it, you know, we're very pleased to get that money and and we're working with the county now with in other municipalities, so the availability of some additional money that'll could round out that request and other requests for their park, but it's Heritage Days coming up. It's gonna be a fantastic day there for the community and and all that. Just to add that I welcome some families out to their home in Brookfield. We wish we had started this earlier, picking up again, but the pandemic kind of ran into it, but to welcome all new families, Emmitsburg. But this is where we're starting and and again, welcomed everybody. A lot of wonderful people moving here and it speaks highly of our town and which way we're going. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Moving forward, we turn to public comments in general, not related to specific agenda items necessarily. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment at this time?
We have one person, however, I believe she's waiting for discussion item B in administrative business.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll we'll press forward then and turn to administrative business and would anyone have issue if we were to flip flop? Item B and item A. Is that permissible among the board members? Yeah. Okay.
I'm good.
The the reason I'm asking for that is we have somebody here for public comment and hopefully we can move that forward. Okay, so let's turn, please, then to our administrative business item. Discussion of the status of the North Gate Park. And I'll turn that to staff. Will that be Ms. Willetts or Mr. Golden?
Um, I'll just, I think it was the request of Commissioner Davis. I'll just address it briefly. I think everybody got the the letter from the town attorney, Ms. Powell. And if you were able to read through that and Zach chime in if I missed something. Due to the layout of the park and the stormwater pond, it is not a subdivisible piece of property. And in the long run, we are not going to take over the stormwater pond. So the long and short of it is Ms. Powell recommends that we do not take over that park and we can't subdivide it. So if we take over the park, we have to take over the stormwater pond. That's her letter in a nutshell. And then I know Commissioner Davis had some things he wanted to talk about, I believe.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, with that park being the only one that that we're not supporting in any way, there's there's got to be a way we can do something there. It's not fair for the North Gate residents to be be footing the bill for that park when it's being used by the by people from the the north side of Emmitsburg. And so there's something we should be able to do. We should be able to to rent it or give them some a fee or or something like that, you know, to help them subsidize that cost. I think it's only fair that we, you know, treat all the all the residents that use those parks the same way. So that's that's mine in a nutshell.
Right. Um, my I have my concern is just twofold, not necessarily twofold. One option obviously is a maintenance agreement that the town could enter into with the North Gate Homeowners Association. And that would be something that I would recommend Ms. Powell type up. And then we've already reached out to playground specialists. The cost to to maintain the or the the park, excuse me, or the playground. Right now, they're estimating out of pocket initially would be about six thousand ninety one dollars to bring it up to where it should be. My only concern is what we do for North Gate. The rest of these parks that are hopefully are playgrounds that are going to be coming in with new development. Are we going to take over all their playgrounds as well?
Well, am I correct to say that we already do the other developments?
Well, part now with the developments coming in, they're going to be required to either construct a play, and this is Zach, I'll turn it over to you, but they're either going to be required to construct a playground or fee in lieu. And right now, Silo Hill is our playground and I believe Emmett Gardens are the two only two developments that currently have a playground.
Well, the reason I'd like to do something with this park, it would solve our problem for whoever is going to develop in the Emmett Ridge two. So that would no longer be an issue and we could take care of that. And if we have a contractor or whatever you want to call it with with North Gate, then they should be open to letting the other the other people come on in and use the park since we're helping with the upkeep. That would
I'm just relaying the information is up to the mayor and the board what what they choose to do with North Gate. It's just keeping in mind what we do for North Gate, we have to do for others. But you're correct, we do have Silo Hill and we do have Emmett Gardens.
If I can just chime in real quick. Commissioner Davis. Just I just kind of want to speak on behalf of the Stormwater Pond staff and the mayor strongly, strongly recommend we do not take over that pond. Our costs right now for the MS four program are astronomical, astronomical. And one thing Kathy mentioned, which was very true, it's one lot. It'd be totally different situation if the park was on a separate lot than the stormwater pond. Unfortunately, it's it's an unsubdividable lot because they're actually right on top of one another. So again, we strongly recommend the stormwater pond stays out of the town's ownership or even maintenance agreement for the the pond itself.
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Ritz, let me just jump in for a split second and I'll give you the floor momentarily. Mr. Golden, I I think everyone's on board with the stormwater management piece. I think what Mr. Davis is proposing is some form of subsidy to the HOA if I'm reading it correctly. And then please correct me, Mr. Davis, if that's not the case. But the other side of it is I don't see us in any way moving toward any management of the stormwater drain, stormwater pond management pond. So I I think that message we're all on board with. I think we have unanimity there. I think really the question relates to just providing some means of additional support. And that's the question. I think the board and the mayor are gonna kick around, but I I think you're in good stead there. So I hope that adds clarity. Mr. Ritz, yes, sir.
Um, yes, yeah, I I agree. This stormwater management, that that's not where I was going with that. I think that Commissioner Davis has some really good ideas. I just want to clarify, though, just just for my sake, the the lot, it's stated several times that it cannot be subdivided. And I just want to make absolutely sure. Is there any legal? Is it legally permissible for the North Gate HOA to deed over a section of that lot? As in the piece of property up in Emmett Ridge two that was
with I think that would be subdividing it. And that's what they're saying. It's not possible.
And even even if they deeded for a dollar or something like that, you know, like if it was just that small portion of the park and then clearly put in some sort of delineation of a fence or something near the stormwater property, which would still be part of the the North Gate portion. I just don't know if that's possible. I I don't know what's keeping keeping that lot from being subdivided if a portion of it was donated to the town, if that was even possible.
So Zach, if you want to jump in.
Yes.
Leslie outlined in her letter, wherever I just set it down at, there's certain restrictions because I think the the playground butts up right to the stormwater pond and and technically there should be fence completely surrounding the playground.
Correct.
But go ahead, Zach, you take that portion of it.
Yeah, so we did a deep dive into this once Commissioner Davis brought this up at the previous town meeting, I believe it was, and Leslie and I looked at the code and the park literally equipment is literally on top of the stormwater ponds embankment. There has to be so many feet buffer according to our code and basically state code as well. Frederick County is our our stormwater code. And it's it's impossible to even get variances from the Board of Appeals to subdivide the lot, unfortunately. Okay, I I know we have public comment this evening, too, and I I just wanted one more thing.
Yeah, sure.
This this all goes back to the discussion we had in April with Emmett Ridge two wherein I I voted no for for that developer at the time, D D R Horton. For the fee in lieu for the they didn't want to build park. And my main concern was, well, you know, North Gate has a park then that individuals in Emmett Ridge two aren't going to be able to use, technically not be able to use, but they're probably going to use it anyway. So I guess one question I have at this point, have there been any discussions with another developer for completing Emmett Ridge two? And have they expressed any interest in seeking the fee in lieu as well?
No, like I think we mentioned to you that I believe Richard DeMitt is interested in the property, but there's been no movement on it. I would imagine he's probably waiting to finish his other homes. But at this point, there's not been any other contact with anybody else, no further discussion of fee in lieu for that piece of property.
All right.
Okay, so Ritz, does that take care of your inquiry for the moment?
At this at this time, yeah, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis, we're coming back to you. Any any items before we go to public comment?
No, I just wish that we would have an option for the whoever develops Emmett Ridge two to say, hey, look, we do have a park there if you would like to pay in lieu of, and that would help take care of that park for the foreseeable future.
It might. It might with that playground or that playground being there sweeten the deal for whichever developer comes in to do fee in lieu as opposed to constructing another playground. So I I agree with that.
Mr. President, I got a question for about the park then. This is actually directed towards Mr. Golden. With it, is the stormwater pond up to code? Is there anything that would change in that pond? I mean, is it to the point where, okay, that's exactly how big it should be, anything of that nature where if if a fence did have to go in, they could close off part of that pond or anything of that nature? Or is it set in stone that, hey, that's the exact size it needs to be and it's concrete and the way it's going to be done and there's you can't put a fence up or anything of that nature?
Sure. So it's a good question. The state's actually very lenient.
Sure, so it's a good question. The state's actually very lenient on HOAs. They really crack down on municipalities, so. Our current permit term for our MS four program is two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. And we currently have projects specified out in order to meet those unfunded federal and state mandates. That includes Silo Hill Basin, Silo Hill Stormwater Basin and also planting twenty-five acres of trees. On our wastewater treatment plant property and also the daughters charity property across US fifteen. One thing that Kathy and the mayor and I have been kicking around trying to find, you know, lower cost projects is retrofitting. The North Gate Basin. And that would include putting a new fence around the basin in order to protect children. From falling in and potentially drowning. However, we don't have anything in our code that would. Allow us to. Enforce that on the HOA. It's currently in standard. It meets the standards of back when it was built in the nineties. It's not a functioning basin, basically when it rains even an inch or two, it goes straight into flat run stream and that's why you see. Overflows all the time or frequent overflows when it has a larger rain events, but. They're currently meeting code, however, it really doesn't meet. Standards for treatment or. Holding water or large rain event. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so so my question would be then theoretically with the end of. The Chesapeake, what was it, MS four project? Come two thousand twenty-three, that could be something that is put. Into play for the town and and that improvement could be done. In theory, where it could then be a functional basin. Long term and a fence could be provided around it and then would that? Basically give us the option then of subdividing it in the future, say two, three years down the line when theoretically. Emmett Ridge two would be completed as well.
That's another good question. I would have to talk with the engineers and and also I'd have to talk with Leslie. I don't know if the basin is going to have to remain its current size. In order to meet the requirement set forth by MDE. But that's something we can try to keep in mind in the next five years, you know, is would the basin be able to be, you know, moved to the to the right. Towards North Seaton Avenue further and possibly subdividing in the future. That's. Possibility, but we'd have to we'd have to see the engineers will have to tell us, you know, those answers.
Okay, so for for our purposes right now, when we're all talking about wanting to subdivide this and, you know, possibly the town take it over and things of that nature, obviously can't be subdivided right now. But we, as we go forward with MDE and things of that nature. There's there could be a tentative plan put into place where this could happen for us in the future.
Possibly, yeah, I'm not.
I don't, yeah, I don't want anything in concrete, obviously. I'm just trying to throw more options out there for us to figure out. Because, I mean, let's face it, at this point in time, Emmett Ridge two is probably going to take another two to three years for. Purchase permitting, developing and everything of that nature. If we can throw that into the timeline as well, that could be a viable option theoretically. Long term for Emmett Ridge two, the town as well as the North Gate community.
Yes, yes, if we're able to take that basin and move it further towards North Seaton Avenue. That's 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 a possibility. It just has to meet our subdivision code. So theoretically, yes, but we'll have to see how it all plays out.
It just so that we have more options out there instead of just a cold, hard, and we can't do anything about this. At least we have a long term plan, possibly.
Absolutely.
Alright, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I want to I'm going to turn to Ms. Sabrina Paxton first. And ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't have your full name listed on my. Zoom plate. So if you could please process wise. Share your name and your address and we'll have you move forward. I'm sorry.
My name's Sabrina Paxton Daly and I live at twelve Zanella Drive in Emmitsburg. I I hope y'all can hear me. I I had some technical difficulties. Okay, good. You know, I'm I'm sorry to hear that we're not subdivitable. That's that's rough. And I think with a mind to whatever you do for us, you would have to do for other developments. The fact of the matter is every development built after us has not had a park. And the other two developments that have parks, you do take over. So. I do feel like it is not. Out of precedent for the town to help our park situation. The fact of the matter is, and I'm I'm a little surprised to hear it takes six thousand dollars to bring our park up to code because literally we spend that if not more. Every year bringing it up to code. We have vandalism issues that have always been. Nobody's listened to or taken seriously and they're very costly for us and we throw forty-nine more homes back there. And this is just not tenable and it's not fair. I know when we were built, there was only Memorial Park and so we were obligated to provide. An open park. I have talked to. Sue Cipperly and the fellow who sat in her seat before her and to Dave Haller. About even fencing our park and giving our residents keys so that we can cut down on the vandalism issue. And I was told we cannot app, we cannot do that. As as our development agreement is. So I I think asking seventy-five folk to to support this, seventy-five homeowners. Keeping in mind that over half of our our homes are duplexes and according to our articles of incorporation. They pay half the homeowner's fees as the single family. So we are running on a very lean budget. I mean, we've had, we're thirty years old. We had to replace a sign. We had to re-landscape a median. We had to put in new sidewalks. Were spent and then on top of it, the park, which is very costly to press to maintain. So, you know, hearing that we're we're looking at this development, you know, nothing happening for the next couple of years. I just want to make sure. That decisions are made that are going to be fair to our community. I guess that's really all I have to say.
I might have misspoke. It's not bringing it up to code. It's to make some changes. It's to remove and dispose of the existing seesaw. Seesaws aren't. Pieces of equipment that that playground contractors promote anymore because of their. Liability and being dangerous. So they recommend removing and disposing of the existing seesaw and the plastic spring rider at the entrance. And then adding some new Play World equipment. And then the installation, which it all comes up to about six thousand dollars, which is not unreasonable. I think that's a fair.
No, it's not. And I can't help but wonder if you don't get a better deal than we do. Because, no, really, I mean, our six thousand dollars is not doing that. And it's one of the reasons we haven't replaced those pieces. I know that they're old and most parks don't have them anymore, but. It it's really costly for us to do that. The last piece of equipment we replaced. I think it ended up costing us the better part of ten thousand dollars and that was one small piece of equipment. That the great big jungle gym rock climbing, you know, climbing wall apparatus, that and several of the. Benches were all part of a grant that Nikki Burris and I wrote several years ago. So we got about thirty-two thousand dollars of equipment. For four thousand dollars. And other than replacing the defunct merry-go-round, it's really all we've been able to do because just maintaining. The mulch levels, the ADA requirements and the vandalism and just broken, you know, some stuff, it just ages and you have to replace bits and pieces. It's just more than we can keep ahead of.
Well, I think that's why the town attorney and discussions with the mayor. That I think the best option for if if this is what the board and the mayor chooses. Is, you know, not waiting the two or three years to see another developer come in. The option of a maintenance agreement. Probably is the fastest way to to accomplish the goals of. Your HOA and and what our commissioners are looking for.
Okay. Yeah, I I feel that my community would probably be very open to that discussion.
And I want to thank the mayor for, you know, digging in on that one. That would, that's that's a pretty sound approach to it. I'll I'll just throw out one hypothetical that might also address what Mr. Davis was discussing. And what Ms. Ms. Willetts was discussing about the 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 fairness or equity piece for the HOAs. It might be our. It would, it would be something maybe the board could consider making funds available to HOAs by setting priorities. For maybe a grant they could apply for from the town. Like with a priority toward, you know, funding. Something in the neighborhood that an HOA would want to see. And that might be another way to approach this, but. I think working with staff and using the mayor's ideas, I I think that discussion is is. I'm glad you guys said that you'll be on board with that because I think that's our most productive venue.
Well, I I mean, I'll have to, you know, my community has to vote on anything and we have to have a sixty percent passage for most things and. So, you know, it will require a couple of meetings and and some legwork to. So that people are completely informed as to what we're asking them to support. And, you know, so I can't, I can't like like. Come out and say we're on board for that because I'm only one of seventy-five folk, so.
I don't think anybody here is expecting.
But I would happily present it.
My recommendation would be to take it to your homeowners association. Mr. Mayor, do you agree with this? To take it to your homeowners association and see if this is something they're amendable to before we, you know, we engage our town attorney. And go into the expense of trying to draft something to make sure that your HOA is on board with a maintenance agreement with the town.
Okay.
And then we can, you know, work on it further after that.
Sure. Do you have a date you would want that information by?
That's all, that's up to you.
Because that's going to take a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got a full agenda for July and I'm I'm sure Zach will probably slam us in August too. But whenever you, you know, you have an initial answer, then we can start working on it from our end. Mr. Mayor, are you good with that?
Yes, I am. And Ms. Paxton Daly, it's good to talk to you and see you. We talked a couple of months ago about this and then I put a call into you, but I'd like to catch up with you. Any any assistance we can give you or Commissioner Davis or any of our other commissioners where. We recognize how you've offered this to the community, your your park there and. We want to work something out for you, but let's get something that's you all want. And if we do it, it's acceptable to your HOA because I I know you're ready to step down. Is that correct?
Well, if nobody's ready to step up, so. I there there's a couple of things in the works that if I if I can't find somebody who wants to to lead the HOA. Then I may need to to stay on to see those things resolved. This this being one of them. I have two other board members night and they're great. They're great people, but neither in a position right now to president the HOA, so. Unless somebody comes forward by our annual meeting, then I'm I'm probably going to have to hang in there a little longer until we get we get these big projects resolved.
Great, okay. Mr. Mayor, anything else?
I I think we're good, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm okay. It just, it makes me want to push more. Now, from what I just heard, we we don't do anything for them and then we tell them, oh, and by the way, you can't lock it up, so only your people can use it. You know, that that's kind of. I guess that's.
That was a previous previous time. That's I've never heard that. It's never been brought forth to to myself or staff that I'm aware of right now. So as she said, it was a previous administration. So if it's a town and if it if we have a maintenance agreement, then it's going to be. Basically, open. Because you can't, you can't maintain a town park and not have it open to everybody.
Oh, I I agree. Yeah, I agree that, but we we've told them in the past, they can't lock it up and we're not going to give you any money and. Because we want to let our other people come in and use it. So that's, I think we got to look at that real hard. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Paxton Daly, thank you very much for sharing your commentary. As well as I think we're going to move on to our next item discussing the sheriff's contract.
Okay. So we received the sheriff's contract for fiscal year twenty-two. It's the same services. It would be deputy White House, deputy A-Halt. The contract is the same form, same template as it has always been. This year, last year, we spent two hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars on the contract. Fiscal year twenty-two contract is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars, which is. An eight point five three percent increase or twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eight increase for fiscal year twenty-two. And their letter states it mainly due to the change in uniform law enforcement pay scale and associated. Benefit costs including health insurance, retirement benefits and fleet fuel. The cost of gas. Increasing significantly. So that's sheriff's office contract. Staff would be looking for approval for the contract for fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay, do we need to view this as modified?
No, this is the official contract. There's been no changes to the contract. What we requested at the budget meeting was we had estimated what we thought the contract would be. And then we got the official contract and it was higher than what we originally budgeted.
Okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion? To accept the. Twenty twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-two Frederick County Sheriff's Sheriff's Office contract at this time.
I saw a move.
And that's Commissioner Sweeney, is that correct?
That's correct. I'm here.
Very good. Welcome, sir. Thank you. So Commissioners and Sweeney is in the meeting as of eight eighteen PM. The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion for this administrative business item? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. The motion carries five to zero. Terrific, thank you. All right, we now turn to our next administrative admission administrative business item. Related to opening the town office for town meetings for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to start or are you going to take care of it?
You go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so I attend, I listened to the county executive. I'm just going to relay the information that I I got from the county executive's office. At her briefing, I think it was Thursday of last week. Her intent is to begin on Monday, August second. With allowing the public to come into county facilities. On a phased in basis with basically she said was going to be by appointment only. And then her intent is to open county buildings back to normal. Public coming in and out on September. Excuse me real quick, September first. She's continuing with her mask mandate for county buildings until September first. The mayor and I have had discussions back and forth on this and we wanted to get the commissioner's input. On allowing the public into the town meetings and then we would take. Take that back to to Jan with any requests that we might have. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, so then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Donald.
Thank you. So the question being put in front of us sounds like as a board, we want to see. Public access before. What the county is asking for or the the county is mandating. And I'll I'll jump in feet first. I would like to see the public having access to the building so long as it is safe. I understand the executives concerned, but I think there there's a great value of the face-to-face business and having heard the governor. Say that we're dropping basically all restrictions. I I think this would be a safe time to do this. So just so that's my opinion, throwing that in.
Yeah, so staff, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
We, prior to COVID happening and then in response to COVID. We had already worked with the county to make the front office more secure. For many reasons, so the majority of the business can be conducted through the window, which would then significantly reduce. Public access or public, not access, but interactions with staff. Because ultimately we want to want to protect our staff and and as well as the mayor and commissioner and our public. So I think we can reasonably accommodate. The public through the the measures. We have the temperature scan that would be required coming into the building. In the front office and then the majority of of business would have to be conducted through the. Window. One thing that I would like to see happen is if you if you require a meeting with staff, a certain staff member. I would like to see that arranged with that particular staff member. I would like to see that arranged with that particular staff member, um. Kind of like an appointment, uh, obviously staff needs to be flexible with that, um. That would be my only request, but I think um, in talking with the mayor, I think we can reasonably accommodate uh, the public. I know, you know, they need to make sure since she's not opened the building up to the public that. You know, the business comes up to the town office and they promptly leave the building then. But you have the people coming in for the library anyway.
I was just going to state that, you know, libraries are a different beast and they're already open. The library's in the same building, so. I really don't think it, it's fair um, to have a library open downstairs. And then to continue to restrict our town meetings upstairs just because it's a county building. Um, frankly, I, I, I'm opposed to waiting um, until August or even September. I think that's ridiculous.
I don't think that's what we're asking. Um, remember, no, that, remembering that we have a lease with the county executive and the county executive's office, it is her building. Um, and we have a lease that we have to follow.
I understand that and I'm not, I'm just saying, I think it's ridiculous on county executives' part and, and their mentality of, you know, keeping. All county buildings closed away in such a way when the library is open downstairs, so. If, if the county executive's office comes back and tells us, no, we can't do this, then. Um, well, I don't know where we'll go from there, but.
Yeah, well.
It is, it's, it's just flat out ridiculous, though. If the library was in a different building, okay, um, they'd have a better argument.
Yeah, I think we'll cross that bridge, Mr. Mayor, if, if that happens, but I don't foresee her. Um, her office uh, redirect, rejecting our request. I just think it's, it's um, a formality that the mayor. Should uh, reach out to her personally and make the request, um.
So do you need a, do you need a vote from the board to? Make that request possible, Mr. Mayor, or are you willing to do this?
It just could. Agree, agree that you want to go back, you say what you want to be open, you want to be open in July, you want to be open in August, or. What do you want and what part of the office you want to open? Public, uh, public meetings uh, in July and uh, or August.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was, I was honestly, I was hoping we were going to vote on that tonight, just so we at least.
Okay.
Hopefully show some sort of solid, solidarity or maybe not, um.
Mr. Ritz, I want to run the vote, can I do that? And that way we can do this, okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, it is not, it's not a voted item, if you read the agenda, however you could do consent.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, for the sake of consent, this is draw poll. So, Mr. Ritz, you are certainly in favor of opening it sooner rather than later, is that fair to say?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Sweeney?
Um, I'm for opening also.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
Yes, uh, I am also in favor and uh, the positivity rate, I believe. In the, the county is lower than the state and right now the state is saying one out of every hundred thousand people are testing positive. So that means that number is even uh, you know, lower for, for the county and it's just. There's, there's, there's nothing for her to be able to back this by other than she's scared to death. You don't want to tell her that, but that's okay too.
Okay, Commissioner Burns, thank you, sir. Commissioner Burns?
Ah, Frank got me laughing on that one. Um, I, I, I agree that we should open.
Okay, so the next piece, I'll, I'll ask for consideration of. Um, is it safe that we would, oh well, that's not a good word choice. Uh, i- is there consensus, we would like to see the mayor push for a, a July fifteenth? Uh, opening for public access. Does anybody have any concerns related to that?
Yes, I'd move it to July twelfth for our July twelfth meeting.
Oh, very good, okay, understood. That's a very good point, Mr. Ritz, thank you, sir. Okay, so for July twelfth, does anybody have any concerns about uh, seeking a July twelfth opening of this to the public?
None.
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I turn to you um, with a, a straw poll taken of the board, the consensus seems to be. We do want to see a request put forward to the county executive allowing. Uh, the town office to be open to the public as of July twelfth. Uh, and in, and, and forward. Um. So if that could be put forward on your, uh, on our behalf through yourself to the executive, that would be appreciated.
Okay, the, just one question up, can we go with the uh. Uh, appointment only for staff. If, on some of, I mean, if you're coming to, to the front desk, that's one thing, but if you need to see somebody else. Do it by appointment only, because.
Okay, and that would be.
We're still doing some teleconferencing in, in, uh, for a lot of reasons.
Okay, I'll turn to the board. Anybody have any concerns related to that request from staff through the mayor?
I, I don't have a concern, I was actually going to make that point, I wasn't sure that if Steph was actually there a hundred percent. Um, in person, so if somebody needed, let's say, um, permit, some permit work and, and, and Mr. Golden isn't there, then obviously. There might not be somebody there that can help, so maybe, you know, the, the whole um. Appointment thing would be, would be a good idea. But like, if somebody needed a fishing license, I think there, there are multiple individuals at the, at the town office. If somebody's there, they can help there at the window, boom, done, right?
Yes, absolutely, but I, I will tell you that staff has done a, an amazing job. Of accomplishing all the permits and fishing licenses and I guess hunting licenses are going to start kicking off here in July. Of facilitating them through email, but absolutely, they'd come to the front desk. For, you know, to pay your water bill, to uh, fishing licenses, park permits, pavilion requests. Um, but if it's something specific like, you know, maybe a zoning permit or a development meeting or, or something along those lines, then an appointment. Uh, would be beneficial.
Sounds to me like the appointment. I'm just going to say, it just sounds to me like the appointment um, issues, so to speak. Are fewer in nature anyway, so. It's, it's not going to be like a major disruption to anybody, that's, that's what I'm getting from it, I, I don't think, okay.
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other board members have concern, or, or any other board members have concern or issue with? Uh, the appointment requirement for staff um, beyond the front window? Okay, so with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe we have uh, accord on your request. And uh, specific language to work with related to uh, the request to the executive. So I, I think we satisfied both, okay, so I'm going to move on unless someone has a concern with this item. Okay, so pressing forward, um, we now turn to our consent agenda where we have nothing. And we press forward with our first uh, agenda item, uh, impact fee and park and rec fee in lieu study presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so I'm going to give a brief uh, introduction here, so town staff with the mayor's approval. Um, hired Tischler Bees out of Bethesda, Maryland, um, they're the number one company who does impact fee studies. And also we wanted them to look at our park, our rec fee in lieu study. Um, so I'm going to hand it over to uh, Carl from Tischler Bees. Uh, one thing we are going to note that the impact fee is not included in this report due to town staff. And the contractor needing guidance um, from the board for our impact fee, uh, the main purpose of this is to have a legally defensible. Uh, impact fee and also the fee in lieu. Um, you know, if the town would ever get sued from a developer, we want to have a legally defensible uh, amount for our fee, so. Uh, if possible, I'm going to turn it over to Carl.
Hello, I'm Carl, I'm with uh, Tischler Bees and I'm working with Zach and other town staff over the last couple of months to put together some. Study for the town and.
Can you also give us your last name, please?
Carl Nichols.
Terrific, thank you.
Yep, and I guess. Yeah, or uh, Zach, are you going to be operating the slides?
It will be Amy, so whenever you're ready, just say, um, next slide.
All right, uh, let's get started. Here the first, get to the next slide, yeah, so. This slide is all about legal methodology, um, just covering sort of our basis. Uh, for those that don't know, impact fees are one-time payments to fund system improvements. Uh, usually assessed at sort of the outset of a new development or a building permit application. Uh, these funds cannot be ju- deposited into the general fund, uh, generally. You legally are bound to hold them in a separate fund, uh, so you don't want to co-mingle. These monies with other sort of revenue streams that the town may have. Uh, basic legal requirements uh, are need, benefit and proportionality, so in the uh. In the study, we actually showed, you know, the town's demand, the demand for new development, the need for system improvements, uh, benefit. So the townwide sort of service area and proportionality needs to be proportional to the uh, demand met by new developments, so it can't be. Charging uh, new development more than current development or giving new development a lower level of service than current development. And then it takes the uh, the calculation, uh, just the three basic methodologies depending on the current state of uh. Town improvements, so cost recovery would examine the uh, past expenditures from the town on. The improvements in question and determine new growth share of those costs already expended. Incremental expansion uh, documents the current level of service and just charges new development based on. The current level of service and current costs. Uh, and then a plan-based would usually be based on a uh, a future planned improvement, so generally. A CIP with fairly specific identified costs and a plan and that sort of thing. And you can get to the next slide. Yeah, so in the calculation of impact fees, we have to determine if the need for credit is established, so. Three types of credits, uh, site-specific credits where a developer will build a uh. A playground of sorts or something along those lines where they don't want to double pay for paying for the playground and then also paying the impact fee. Uh, the second type of credit we would uh. Examine would be a debt service credit, so if a town already had uh, existing debt on, say, park land or something like that. We would need to include credits so that uh, fee payers would not double pay via property taxes and. Uh, the impact fee and then the third kind would be a dedicated revenue, so. If a certain, so a certain sales tax that uh, towns or townsfolk will pay for uh. Is also going towards system improvements, we would need to account for that. Next slide. So here's a summary of the development projections that are included in the impact fee study, so. At the top, we have projected a hundred and sixty-five person increase associated with a sixty new uh, single-family units. That's based on past building permit data from the last five years, I think. Um, and then there would also be. A two hundred and thirty-four increase in employment over the next ten years and then a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. Of non-residential floor area, that's also based on past non-residential growth, uh, yeah, next slide. So in this impact fee study, we only have uh, one necessary public service included, that's parks and recreation. And we decided on a townwide service area for park impact fees. And the study includes three components, a component for park land, a component for park improvements and one for pool facilities. All of them take the form of an incremental expansion methodology, as I described before. Um, and then the proportionate share, so park impact fees are generally allocated a hundred percent to residential development, so. We do not propose any uh, fee be charged to non-residential development for the uh, park improvements or park. Uh, and recreation system improvements, uh, next slide. So the first component, park land, uh, at the top, you'll see an inventory of the current park land, community park land. Uh, so other smaller parks, uh, pocket parks not included in this just because we want to. Make sure it's proportionate and there's this, it serves the entire community, so we have. A uh, total inventory of fifty-eight point six-one acres of park land and at fifty thousand dollars an acre, that equates to two point nine-three. Million dollars in park land. And dividing that over the current population yields and acres per person of point zero-two acres per person and. Multiplying that by the uh, current cost per acre yields and a thousand dollar uh, cost per person. Next slide. Here is park improvements, so here we have detailed the improvements existing on the same park land that we identified in the previous slide. And the total seventeen improvements and at around nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Which yields a weighted average cost per improvement of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. So with the existing improvements, obviously residential shares a hundred percent, the twenty-two dividing the current number of improvements over the current population. Yields and improvements per person of point zero-zero-six. And then multiplying that by the weighted average cost per improvement yields a cost per person of three hundred and thirty-one ninety-five. Uh, next slide. And the third component, the final component, there's pool facilities, so this actually does not include the pool itself. Um, but this just includes the pool building and the pool pavilion, uh, totaling three thousand, three hundred and twelve square feet. Uh, at a replacement cost of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, yielding an average cost per square foot of uh, seventy-five dollars. This is from uh, the town insurance report, I think. Um, and then, so the same as before, dividing it over population, square feet per person is one point one-three. Multiplying by the cost per square foot yields a cost per person of eighty-four sixty-four. Next slide, please. So here we're projecting the demand for park land, so at the top you can see the level of service, the point zero-two acres per person. At fifty thousand dollars an acre, so we have a projection, the same a hundred and sixty-five persons over the next ten years. Will demand three point three more acres of park land, so. Multiplying that by the cost per acre yields a estimated growth-related expenditure of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty-three. A hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, next slide, please. In a similar fashion, the level of service is documented at the top and the cost per unit at the top. This uh, the same sort of methodology, it's point nine-six improvements demanded from new development. Yielding growth-related expenditure of approximately fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars in the next ten years, next slide, please. And finally, we have the pool facilities have one point one-three square feet per person. Multiplying that by the a hundred and sixty-five new persons projected in the town yields. And estimated additional a hundred and eighty-seven square feet of pool facilities. Which equates to approximately a hundred, thirteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, in growth-related expenditures, uh, next slide, please. So here we can see the estimated park impact fee, so we have the cost per persons from the.
Could you provide the page, pull this slide up?
Was it?
Could you provide the page number in the report that you are on when you call the slide because? I'm, I'm not able to pull it up as the dominating feature on the screen. So I can pull it from a second source?
Yes, here, one second, I just have to pull up the, or.
It might be on the slide that was projected?
I don't, I don't think it's on the slide exactly, and.
He's on page eighteen of forty-six.
Eighteen, terrific, thank you.
Yes.
It, it, I just interrupted, is there a reason why the slideshow is not showing, um, usually the town of Emmitsburg as, as a user? Um, anytime there's a presentation or a slideshow, it's like a, comes up on the main screen, it's not doing that tonight. In Zoom, I'm not getting it.
Right, that, that's the difficulty I'm having. So, M- Mr. Ritz, what I've done is I've pulled up the email with the agenda and I'm, I'm using that and I'm trying to follow along, but.
It's difficult.
Correct.
Um, I think there should be a way you can lock the uh, town of Emmitsburg participant as the uh, view that you have, I'm. Not totally positive, we use Microsoft Teams a lot, so.
Right, Zoom will do it if it's a shared document, so if he shares his document, he can do that, like share screen. But we're, we're not getting that right now. So i- if you could just keep giving us the pages, we can kind of flow that way.
You can put three dots at the top and press highlight or highlight pen.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we're actually pretty much near the end, I think Zach was right when he said page nineteen.
Okay.
So you should be seeing the uh, total. So you should be seeing the total fee amount, which is the cost per person of a one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Hey Carl, one second. Sorry to interrupt you. So please, whoever is watching this, switch your view. Go to, what is it first? Click on town of Emmitsburg and it should come up. Where's the view? The top right part of your screen, it says gallery view or speaker view. You're probably on what speaker? Your own, your own speaker should be on gallery.
Very good, okay.
Did it work?
It's working. I think he shared his screen.
Yep. And now we've lost it. Here we go.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
No worries. Okay, we're back in, we're back in action.
All right, awesome. So, yes, so we can see the cost per person above, that's just added up. And then applied to persons for housing unit, persons for housing unit is a estimate from the Census Bureau on from Emmitsburg data. Estimating the number of persons for housing unit for two housing unit categories, single family and multifamily. So persons for housing unit for single-family development is estimated to be at two point seven five and the multifamily is one point four six. Multiplying those numbers by the cost per person yields two different fee amounts, one for single family, one for multifamily and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight. For single family in two thousand sixty-nine dollars. For multifamily development, the current fee is twelve hundred dollars for both kinds of development, which means there is a two thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollar increase in the fee for single family and then an eight hundred and sixty-nine dollar increase for multifamily development. And if we go to the next slide, I think that should be the next page in the report. I don't have it in front of me. I'm not positive. And then
Yes, this is page twenty-seven, I'm sorry.
Perfect. So here we have the revenue projections. So we have the total growth-related expenditures there at the top. It was a hundred and sixty-five thousand, fifty-four thousand and thirteen thousand. Those were just sums to get to two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars in projected growth-related expenditures over the next ten years. And we have restated the fee amounts for single family and multifamily development. And given that the projections only added sixty single-family units, the projected fee revenue was two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And for multifamily development, we had not projected any additional development. So the revenue there is zero. And I guess that's sort of, that's sort of ends it for me. I mean, does there, is there any questions or comments?
If I beg of the commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Just that the intent here of our planters pointing this out to me that the fee in lieu is only for the parks and not to be added to every house that comes in here at this, you know, what we're reviewing right now is, is the is that correct, sir?
Yeah, so we're recommending this be the new fee in lieu amount when we created the new park ordinance back in twenty twenty. We came up with twelve hundred and that was just basically us going to MML and trying to get an average in our, of our area. However, this is a more scientific way approach and it's more legally defensible. So we're just asking this to be the new fee in lieu amount, not being assessed to every single new family, new single family or new multifamily, even though it should be assessed to every single new house. We're trying to keep prices of houses lower, so it's affordable.
So I guess my, my question is then, it looks like everything that was presented this evening is tied into the policy that we're voting on later this evening.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, and then how much this presentation tonight, this, this study, how much did that cost us?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. I'd have to get back to you.
All right, I, I was, I, I don't either. I didn't have, I, I know we discussed it before. Don't have it in my records, but my next question and tied to that, if we paid X amount for this, then how how often are we going to revisit these park fee in lieu of prices?
That's, I think Carl might be able to answer that, but my, my gut feeling here is this is a, these numbers are good for ten years. Carl, am I correct in that?
Um, I think we generally like to update the impact fees every five years, just because of changing the sort of market conditions and costs associated with any sort of improvement or system, you know, item.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have no further questions on the park portion. I know we're going to be discussing other things, so I'll, I'll let it turn it over, so to speak.
Okay, so I, I hate to say this, but I, I'm walking away with very little from the report based on the speed and I'm looking at what the last slide showed and was not able to review that. And in our documents, we don't have page twenty-seven from the report. That, that was not part of the agenda packet. And I'm a little concerned about that. The, the other piece is early in the presentation, and, and I'll say this, Carl, I, I tried to follow you as quick, as carefully as I could, but you were motoring. You would use the term double tax in reference to concerns with an impact fee and a fee in lieu. And I was wondering if you could revisit that a, a little bit more slowly because truth be told, I didn't follow what your point was on that and I, I'm in the dark, so edify, help.
Well, you don't want any particular development to pay twice for system, their share of growth-related costs. So if developer is, you know, acquiring parkland for the town or building, you know, playgrounds or something for the town, it, you don't want to charge them a fee because that would make them double pay for that, their share of growth-related costs on the sort of parks and recreation system.
I appreciate that, but an impact fee is a separate item than the actions you're taking by the developer. So it, it feels like we're comparing apples and, you know, bricks.
Yes, but you don't, same sort of same sort of concept as, you know, if you're paying for improvements via, uh, so you have you know, there's a lot of towns where we'll do, you know, fees and they'll have, you know, a certain, you know, developers will get contracted to build whatever lot they want because they, you know, whatever sis, whatever makes it better for them to, you know, build, if it makes it easier for them just to build, you know, another park, then we don't want to be charging that same development for a park impact fee that's going to go to acquiring parkland somewhere else in the town. That's, that would be we'd be
Okay.
Double charge.
So, so I, I think, I think that's where my difficulty was because we have what we define as an impact fee, not a park impact fee. So I think that was the language piece that was the concern there. Okay. So no, yes, we don't want to double tax on that. So you're referencing a park impact fee. Um, and then action taken by the developer. All right, that adds clarity. The other piece is for commercial. It strikes me that if a, a community has sufficient parks and recreation commodities, then a commercial entity does benefit from them also in that they take advantage of them. I mean, a, a worker is going to go out at lunch and he's going to go sit in the park. So
That's much more difficult to measure because how do you measure whether or not, you know, how many people from a retail development are going to use a park, you know, it's not
And I understand that, but so the, the, the recommendation of your consulting firm is that there's no fee for a, a commercial entity.
We never, yeah, no, we never charge a fee for parks and recreation improvements or system-wide improvements to non-residential development. That's not a generally accepted methodology.
Okay, all right. And bottom line. Are fees based on your recommendation, how do they align with nearby regional communities?
I think I'd, I'd have to look into that, but I, in my experience, this is anecdotal, obviously. They are fairly modest in terms of, because you have to think about it, it's going to be rolled up into, you know, a large mortgage. You know, it's going to be, you know, I have no idea, but it's not, it's not out of proportion with other studies that I've been a part of.
Okay, but it's not disproportionately low.
No, no, no.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anybody else have questions related to the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burns.
Just a couple of questions. When I read through the presentation, um, you were in agreement with staff that you compared this and it said town of Delaware. Did you mean Delaware County, Pennsylvania? Uh, just, just kind of caught off guard by that part because I looked up
Delaware, Ohio.
Okay, Delaware, Ohio, okay, because I, I thought, and then you compared it to Delaware County, Ohio as well, is that correct?
I'm not, where did you see?
Uh, I'd have to go back and find it. I know that it mentioned county as well in what was given to us in our agenda packet. Um, and that's the only reason I break it up. It's not, it, that's not as big of a deal because I was just concerned if it was Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Having grown up in that area, the median, median household income and everything is, is significantly higher than, um, and median home pricing is significantly higher in that area than per se Frederick County and Emmitsburg specifically. So I was just a little thrown off by that, but if it's town of Delaware and Ohio, obviously I don't have those numbers, so I don't want to try to compare apples to apples or anything of that nature. The second question I had was in figure PR four, the projected demand for public, uh, for parkland. When you, again, these numbers are based off the latest census, I, I assume, I'll ask Mr. Golden that question where the population moved two thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight, the increase in population only goes up seventeen and then you know, sixteen each year, those numbers are in theory, you know, could be on base, but with the possible development that's coming in with you know, Emmett Ridge two and all these other developments that we are all aware of, unfortunately, you might not be aware of, are those numbers going to drastically change and would that have an impact on the residential acres and things of that nature?
Well, luckily with the methodology that we've used for, to estimate these fees, if the development projections are too low, then impact fee revenue. If the development projections, if there ends up being a lot more houses or a lot more development, an impact fee revenue will increase and then therefore the town can upkeep with the demands from the new development more. And then if it's slower than projected, impact fee revenue will decrease and therefore not have to, you know, it, it scales with it. Sorry, I'm not able to speak at the moment, but I
That's fine. I, that, that, that was my concern. Obviously, if this is the median number of what we think projected population density growth would be, then that's fine. And obviously, if we see a huge uptick, which we are presently predicting, then obviously that revenue would go up and that would only benefit us in the long run. I just wanted to double check to make sure. You know, based on the number you, you know, on, on that slide particularly, it says, you know, a hundred and sixty-five over ten years. You know, I, I mean, that could be done in one year in reality with some of the development that's coming in.
Yeah, and the revenue will scale sort of in proportion to those changes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I, I do have another question and everybody just, I want to just flat out right now say that I apologize. I'm not, I'm not grasping something here. I just want to make absolutely a hundred percent sure. So let's say a developer comes to Emmitsburg and they, they have, they're going to build a, they got the development, they have everything planned out, but hey, we're going to take advantage of this, this fee in lieu that we don't want to put a park. So we have X amount of single-family homes. That's going to be multiplied by a certain amount that we're voting on tonight. And they will then pay the town of Emmitsburg that amount, correct?
Correct. The thirty-eight ninety-eight per single-family dwelling, assuming it's a single-family development.
Okay, so they're, they're forking over that money and then the town of Emmitsburg, we can use it however we see fit. My next question is, and I just want to make absolutely sure then, will the developer then roll that fee into the cost of the house?
Absolutely, yeah, I believe.
Yes. Yeah, so this, this is a tricky situation. Um, you know, we like parks, but developers don't want parks. We want some affordable homes for, for, for residents and wow, okay, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Rich, just to clarify something. When the, the fee in lieu is corrected, sorry, pardon me, when the fee in lieu is collected, sorry. That has specific applications. It doesn't just go into the general fund. In fact, it can't go to the general fund. And I believe we have language that it goes toward parks and maintenance of parks. So it, it has a specific landing site. The other piece is
I should have been more specific. Yes, I understood that part, yeah. But to put the town of Emmitsburg in that pot, so to speak, it could be then utilized for parks and
Sure, sure. No, quit. It cannot be, these funds can't be used to maintain current parks. It needs to be used to increase capacity.
Okay, thank you. Thank, that's a, 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 a great correction. Thank you. Mr. Rich, the other side of it is, we certainly do want affordable housing. I know we've been, been discussing the notion of affordable housing, workforce housing and market level, like market cost to housing. Regardless though, by funding capacity in parks or on our end, funding parks, it is a quality of life piece that makes the community healthy, stable, attractive. And that's to anybody at any, any, you know, strata of income level. You, you want a place where, you know, as an adult, you can recreate, but also if one is a parent, a, a place where their young people can recreate. So there, there is value to park support, I'll call it. Uh, and unfortunately, things cost money. So that's what we're trying to resolve is, you know, what's the appropriate funding level that we're seeking?
Um, I was on mute. Sorry, I'm, I'm not trying, I'm sorry, I'm confusing people. Um, no, I, I, I'm not arguing that. That's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm just I'm just thinking, I think ahead, I think out loud, um, and I think that's confusing the situation, so.
Okay. Any other input questions or remarks from the board? Okay, hearing none. Sir, we thank you for your time and uh, I ask staff now, Ms. Willetts, we're not looking for action on this specific recommendation and in this agenda item, is that correct?
That's correct. This was just a presentation.
Correct, okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't
We still have the impact fees. I'm sorry for interrupting. That was the fee, park fee in lieu. We stopped to discuss the, the actual impact fee.
Okay. We move to that now.
Sure, so, uh, chapter three oh eight is our impact fee uh, section. Right now, we charge twelve hundred dollars per residential dwelling unit. It's payable upon municipal zoning permit. Um, all impact fees are committed to the general fund right now, which we found is, um, we shouldn't do. Two hundred of it goes to purchasing, installing and upgrading a local, the local emergency system. And the other one thousand goes towards the acquisition, development and rehabilitation of municipal roads, sidewalk, streetlights and corresponding electrical service, park and recreational areas. So when they originally did this study, they looked at potentially an impact fee for a new garage office. However, the mayor, Kathy and I felt that it was more appropriate to bring this to the board for discussion and kind of see, you know, what your goals are in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. What do you want to see the town? Do you want to see an impact fee? Do you, or do you want to abolish it? Or do you want to see the impact fee go to a sort, a certain project? Carson, I'm asking now you to please Uh, Carson, I'm asking now you to please explain, you know, for a typical impact fee. What do other municipalities use an impact fee for other than parks?
Yeah, so municipalities will use impact fees for, uh, general administrative space. Uh, they'll use impact fees for transportation improvements, adding capacity to the roads. Use impact fees for, uh, stormwater and water management. Uh, all sorts, uh, I mean, library, fire facilities, police facilities, uh, all sorts of, anything that's going to be impacted by growth related, uh, by, you know, it's going to have increased demand from, you know, new development.
Yeah, so the first thing that Kathy and the mayor and I thought were, was great, we can now use this towards, um, you know, maintenance of our road system and, you know, paving our roads, uh, and everything else. However, after talking with, uh, Carson, who is, um, Carl's, uh, boss and also talking with Carl, we actually cannot use any of the impact fee money for maintenance of anything. So we can't use it to maintain the fire department or the MS department or the police department. It has to be to create new capacity. So it'd be to create new roads, new buildings, maybe a new town office, a new garage. I know twenty-two East Main Street's getting really small for the guys, you know, a new garage facility. So tonight was, we really want to discuss this with the board to see, you know, what your goals are for the town. And, you know, do you want an impact fee and for, for what purpose? Um, we're currently using it for, Kathy, I'll turn that over to you, what we're currently using it for, but.
So typically we use it for, you know, that the impact fee goes to fund two. And, um, we use it for, uh, paving, uh, our streets, upkeep of the streets, sidewalks, uh, and maintenance of the streets. Uh, unfortunately, that is not allowable going forward. So we will have to make adjustments for what it's used for because in the town, in our, size of our town, we're not adding new roads. Um, and typically, if any new roads are going to be added, it's going to be at the developer's cost if, if anything is ever annexed in or an additional, um, roads are needed. So, um, we need to, uh, switch gears and figure out what we actually want the impact fees to go to. Um, obviously that's going to come back. It'll eventually have to come back as an ordinance, but we need the information, um, so that we can direct them on their study of where their recommendations are. Uh, where, you know, how to utilize the monies and how much to actually we might need. Um, and Zach's correct, we talked about, uh, a new, uh, police building, a new maintenance building. Things of those nature, uh, new park. So it, so it can go to new park facilities, but not maintaining our current facilities. Is that correct?
Yes, it needs to be in an effort of adding capacity to the, uh, current system. But also in collecting the impact fee money, it does obligate the town to, uh, actually expend on the things that were outlined in the study. So if they wanted, if you guys wanted a new police station, you know, and you collected an impact fee for a new, new police station, you couldn't use that to buy new police vehicles. Um, so it needs to go towards the outlined, uh, purpose in the study.
Yeah, and this isn't something that you guys have to decide upon tonight. Uh, you know, we'd love to have the answer tonight, but it's going to take, you know, you guys might want to take a month to think about it and maybe bring it back in July or August. I know Carson and them want to finish up the study. However, this is a really important, uh, topic and for the future of the Emmitsburg.
I think we'd have to turn to staff, quite honestly. I mean, as board members, we will have ideas, but I think the, the day-to-day operation of the town is going to best define what those needs are. Um, if, if staff were to come forward, like if, if we come forward with, you know, our, our best world scenario, you know, you know, the mountain biking facility, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't, if it doesn't align with the highest needs of the, of the town. So, um, you know, as much as I'd love to see that facility enhanced, of course, uh, the reality is, I think, I know that we have to very much rely on staff to create that, uh, that need list. And we would go from there, in, in my view. I don't want to step on any toes on the board, though.
So what we could do is, is a staff and with the mayor and actually like to maybe reach out to some other municipality, local municipalities to see what they utilize their impact fees for. And, um, come up with maybe a wish list to present, you know, present to the board with, uh, with the mayor's approval, obviously. Um, the wish list, and then I think we could have more productive discussions going forward. I would suggest if there's a board member that has something that they absolutely desire, um, that they would communicate that with us so that we can look into it and have that information ready to go. So we can have, um, good discussions at the next, uh, meeting we discussed this at. That sound reasonable?
Very much so, yes. Anybody else on the board? I invite comment, please.
Have a question. Full question. Okay, impact fee. Um, so I might understand we weren't collecting impact fees at all?
No, we have been collecting impact fees and they would go into our fund two. A portion of it goes to the, went to the emergency, uh, warning system and the remainder of it went into the line item for impact fees. If you recall from this past budget, we transferred monies out of the impact fee line item for paving for fiscal year twenty-two. Going forward with the next budget, we will not be allowed to do that. So we need to come up with a plan of how we want to utilize impact fees that are allowable, um, going forward.
So how, why are, we're not allowable now because it was caught during this present, this study?
So to speak, Carl, can you explain the Supreme Court cases?
Why wasn't it caught before?
It was allowable and we had no reason to, and that's way that this administration and previous administrations have always done it for probably decades, that, that, that code has been in the ordinance and there was no reason or in the, the, um, yeah, the code, that there was no reason to think otherwise. And like we were to discuss with the, during the presentation that staff had, um, our, our impact fees are so low and we generate such low amounts that it was never called into question. So we had no reason to think otherwise.
All right.
The, I mean, the general reason for wanting to separate the funds very specifically is because it used to be the case that municipalities would get this impact fee money and then it would sort of get lost in the general fund. And then the money that it was supposed, or the improvements it was supposed to go to never went to and went to something else. It never, you know, it didn't get to where it needed to go. And, you know, that was, that's, that's an issue in, in terms of charging an impact fee.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Carl, there's, there, I think your presentation, the packet that you, uh, gave out to the board and to the staff, there was recent, uh, Kate court cases relating to impact fees and that's maybe another reason why, uh, the town wasn't aware of, uh,
Yeah, some recent developments, the whole introductory sort of portion of that packet is to outline, you know, sort of what the legal framework is, what boundaries the, uh, the town certainly needs to stay with them.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, in theory, it sounds great. Um, it's, it's almost, you know, collecting the impact fees and then putting them towards a wish list projects. That part sounds good. There's just another, part of me is a little iffy. There's a but, dot, 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 that's going to be connected to it in, in the future. I just obviously don't know what that is, but.
Yeah, and how Carl and Carson explained to us when we had the staff and mayor presentation was, you know, this impact fee is not going to cover a hundred percent of your costs. So if we decide we want to save money for a new municipal building that includes, you know, a garage, a brand new garage for all of our trucks and everything else, you know, it's not going to be a hundred percent. Um, it's, we're going to have to chip in some portion. So this has to be a pledge on behalf of the town that, you know, we're going to have to use this money for this purpose at some point when the, the town determines the need arises. Cause you know, we may outgrow our current space up here. That was one of the, the things we were kicking around. I know Jimmy and their guys are really tight over at their garage on twenty-two East Main. So that's another idea that we threw around, but it's not going to cover a hundred percent of your costs.
You know what else is tight towns? Parking in general, like a parking garage would be really, uh, really nice to have, just say.
Yeah, and that, that's a very good point. And that was something that we brought up at that meeting. Um, Carl, can you kind of explain why that isn't a reason? My, my taking was because we're probably going to do it regardless. It's not considered, uh, an impact fee, um, related cost. Is that correct?
Yeah, given the current level of service with the parking, um, it seems from discussion previously that the, if Emmitsburg had shut its doors today to all new development, it would still be in need of parking facilities. And therefore you can't really attribute its cost to growth. It's, it's a current cost of the, you know, the town might have to figure out another way to fund.
Or a portion, or a, a smaller portion of it could be used for a parking garage that if it were designed to accommodate new, new houses and new residents, but the majority of it is already a need that the town has that it could not be used for. It's, um, so yeah, that's why we need to really think about what we want to do and plan for the future.
Yeah, I mean, uh, is there, does the board have any ideas where we can kind of start, you know, going back and forth with staff and, and, you know, try to think if it's a good idea. Is there any ideas the board has tonight or do you want another month or two to think about it?
I have one that, that, it's funny, this comes up and you say no new roadways. I've always wondered why the visitor center didn't connect onto Silo Hill into the, into our business district. You have people coming off the road and, you know, real easy access down pass to sleep in, right on in and into the business district.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll write that down.
A, a clarification question. Um, a perishable, like a vehicle that offers more capacity to, uh, town staff to allow them to do more functions. Does that not qualify or does it have to be, uh, specific like infrastructure type item? Does it have to be a building? Does it have to be a static thing?
It can be a vehicle, um, it can be, you know, a lot of times we do police equipment for towns as well. Um, it doesn't have to be an actual sort of structure.
Okay, and do we have the capacity, therefore, in the past, we used the impact fee a different way? Is there a way we can define a, a fee that would allow us to continue to use it the way we had been using in the past and have a diminished impact fee? Like a separate feeder? I don't think there's anything precluding us from that, or is that not accurate?
I think part of the issue with the previous fee was that it was used to, uh, maintain current, uh, improvements. So that's, I think that was one of the big issues with it. And then also that there wasn't sort of a documented sort of level of service and, you know, inventory taken with respect to gross demand for, you know, more municipal vehicles or, uh, something like that.
So if we were to create two classes of fees, then one would be an impact fee and we could diminish it by the amount of what we would seek to have, say a class B fee of, you know, maintenance of existing infrastructure, i.e., you know, the water system or a road. Uh, is there anything that would not allow us to do that? So just, just identifying, hey, we're going to apply a fee, but it's not going to be an impact fee by definition. Or we'll have, um, a smaller impact fee, but we'll have a second fee that relates to maintenance of existing infrastructure.
There, you cannot charge an im- uh, impact fee for the maintenance of an existing facility, so.
By another name, there, there is.
Well, it needs to, it needs to increase capacity. It's not, it.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying not an impact fee, but a separate fee altogether.
Oh, I'm, that, that'd be sort of out of my purview, um.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Now that, that, that answers that perfectly. Okay.
Well, Mr. President, why couldn't you just switch it towards new water plant? We need a water plant, Emma Gardens. We need a holding tank for water. That's all improvements from, for future development.
Correct. But, Mr. Swinney, I think those would be excellent recommendations to, uh, staff for, absolutely.
I, I have a question for Carl, though. Would we be double charging because we, we charge a capacity fee already? For, we charge a water capacity fee, um, of eighty-two hundred dollars per home, so we might be double charging. But I, I, I don't know that answer. We might have to go back to Carson.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd have to do a little bit more research on that one, um, and know the details of, you know, what's going on there.
How about lighting for a, uh, for a ball field? That would increase our capacity of having, uh, night games and evening games, uh, things like that.
I think that, I mean, I'm not totally positive, but I I know that ball fields are already included in the fee, in the fee. I'm not sure whether I would be comfortable saying that can be used for lighting, but I know that, you know, park improvements and, you know, baseball fields are already sort of in there. And if that's a cost of the baseball field, then I, you know, I don't see why that hasn't already been sort of included.
So it looks like, uh, we'll do our homework. If we could possibly push this back to July or September, I know July meeting is, is completely booked. Um, we'll do our homework. I'll reach out to other municipalities to see what theirs is used for. We'll look at the new road for the visitor center, the business district, also the water plant, um, Emma Gardens and water lines for that. Um, any other, uh, quick ideas? If you, if you think of anything, just shoot me an email and then, um, staff will look at with the mayor.
How about the new clarifier, stuff like that?
I'm sorry.
The new clarifier? We need a new clarifier for growth?
Well, since we're already building that, I'm assuming, prob- probably wouldn't be able to do that. And we, we wouldn't get much money before that gets put in anyway.
Okay, so I, I turned them as well. It's, um, we've heard regarding fee and lieu, we've heard regarding impact fee and our new management of it. Um, I'm intending to move forward to the next agenda item. Have we missed anything else on this?
No, you're good.
Okay, so at this point, we'll conclude agenda item number one. Uh, and we'll move forward to agenda item number two. Trying to pull up.
Yeah, can I, uh, am I still needed?
No, thank you, Carl.
Thank you. No, uh, my apologies. Thank you very much for your, your information and your presentation.
Yeah, no, awesome. I, uh, look forward to hearing from you guys soon.
Thank you, sir. So we turn to agenda item number two. Public hearing and approval, potential approval of ordinance twenty-one dash zero five for consideration. Um, I need to jump to our language for this one. It's going to take me a moment. Sorry, my system is slow tonight, as is its operator. Okay, Mr. Gold, when I'm playing up your procedures. Okay, so at this time, I'm calling the hearing, the meeting to consider proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero five has now started. You now turn to staff for their presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this public hearing was advertised in the Frederick News Post on June second, two thousand twenty-one. Staff, uh, presented proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero five to the mayor and board of commissioners at their May third, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. The board voted to forward the proposed ordinance to the planning commission for their mandatory review. The planning commission voted unanimously three to zero to recommend approval of proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero five at their meeting on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one without comment. Commissioner Ritz abstained due to voting on the matter at tonight's meeting and one member was absent. Uh, we are now asking for approval of proposed ordinance twenty-one dash zero five um, at, after the conclusion of this public hearing. And Mr. President, that is my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Uh, are there any questions for staff from the board? Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for staff from the board?
I'm just a little concerned about the the three year deal. With all the things that we don't have any control of, the the state and highway and things like that, is that giving people a fair shake? I hate to see somebody put something in there and, you know, at the end of that time, come up short and go up, you're done, sorry.
So that was a very strong recommendation of the town attorney. Basically, what that means is you're talking about all the improvement plat, the final plan. Yes, so basically that means, so we have, I'll give an example, we have final subdivision plans that have been sitting around for over twenty years. And you know, the legal question is, do and the the question for the town is do we want to allow these developers to have the requirements twenty years ago in place today? So if there's an old subdivision plat, you know, sitting around for twenty five years, like there are some you know, legally, could they record the plat possibly? And they would have to abide by all the old the old rules, so our strong recommendation is to keep that in there. Regarding the improvement plat. We had that and we already have that in place now, it's just they they are able to get three year extensions and the attorney recommends that we we lift that and because, as you know, town code changes all the time, just like tonight, we possibly going to have new codes. So we want to have the developers have the most recent safest codes up to date, so that's my short answer.
Again, I guess my only concern is something that's out of their hands. You know, it's just like the state, as long as Rudders is waiting to get state approval, that's totally out of their hands. And I just don't want to see you know, see us run somebody out of town and go, that, sorry, your your three years is up, you're out here.
Is there a means by which someone who is at the end of their three year term can get an extension?
No, extensions, yeah, extensions wouldn't be permitted, they would have to bring the plan back to the planning commission. And again, the the codes at that time would apply, so you know, if you added a additional sidewalk code, for example, they would have to just comply with that, but as long as the rest of their plan is legal to the code, which it should be in three years, the code shouldn't change that much, that it's going to significantly alter on the plans, it would get approved again.
What would be the cost of that?
It would be the town's fee for whatever plan it is, so if it's a final plat, I think the fee's three hundred, five hundred dollars. Somewhere around there. But don't quote me on that, because I have to check the code.
So Zach, with the improvement plan, say they want twenty five taps, water and sewer taps. So we're required to hold, once they submit the improvement plat and it's approved, we have to hold those taps for the duration, correct? And it can't be allocated out?
That's actually a very good point, something I missed, it's actually the preliminary subdivision plan. So once the preliminary subdivision plan is approved, so these, this is basically for new residential developments. Once that's approved, they enter into an agreement, a tap agreement with the town, and then the town will guarantee those taps. So they're not going to be out of the water, so they're not going to lose those, you know, lose the development, they'll still have those tap rights.
But the but the town would be required to hold those taps for the minimum of three, so if we grant them three years on each plat, then we have to hold those taps for three years. If you extend it out five years, then we have to hold those taps in the hopes of them doing something for five years, is that correct?
That's correct.
I have, um. I know, I was just just tapping into what you were saying, the the extension, I guess, if if the applicant could show that, you know, things were out of their hands and things got held up. Regardless, at the at the end of three years, then I'm assuming if this ordinance passes, then it would be on the town planner that would make that final say and let them know, hey, you know, your three years is up. And then they'd have to proceed forward, what 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 other options do they have at that point other than paying that fee, is there any way to appeal the ordinance? Decision.
Now, so this is the reason of this ordinance, and like I said, it was highly recommended by Leslie is in order to protect the town for the future. You know, we have a lot of old plans sitting around with old codes that don't meet the requirements of today's, you know, state and federal regulations, so.
Yes, I agree. Rich, Emma Ridge too comes to mind.
Sure.
But something newer, you know, Christopher Davis brought the point, Rudders, you know, I I don't know all the details, it seems like things are being held up with that, and I know that's not on the town at all. But if something was out of their hands.
Yeah, we would, we would make the developer aware that their plan's about to expire and I I really truly don't believe that the planning commission would deny the plan, you know, if there's something out of their hands, such as an M D E permit or, you know, state highway administration permit, which Rudders came across, you know, that problem as well, but that's all solved.
So that would go to the planning commission at the at the end of the three years, or is it is it done deal, three years is up, you're done, yeah, you got to resubmit?
Yeah, so you three years, the plans expired, then they would have to resubmit to the planning commission for reapproval. And then they would have to meet the codes of that day.
Okay, so assuming there are no more questions from the board. We now turn, is there anybody signed up for public comment?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, so we're closing public comment. Now, if no one has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed. And now we ask any more deliberation or discussion by the board? Anybody have any other comments or concerns on from the board related to what we've been presented for Mr. Ritz? Okay, hearing none, we move forward, therefore, is there a motion to end the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion? The motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, it's been seconded by Commissioner, sorry, the motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Okay, I was muted, I I apologize, I'm voting aye, I was saying it.
Thank you, okay, the motion carries five to zero. And now we turn to Mr. Ritz for a moment. So Mr. Ritz, regarding the item. Now it's an item for consideration. So do you want the motion now related to accepting this item?
You're asking me because?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Golden, Mr. Golden.
Yes, please.
Okay, so. Is there a motion to accept ordinance? Number twenty one dash zero five as presented? Thank you, is there a second for Mr. Sweeney's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, motions made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone against, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries three to two with Commissioner Burns, O'Donnell, Sweeney in favor. Commissioner Ritz, Commissioner Davis against.
Okay, and again, it's only for that one reason, that just scares me that we're going to put developers through something that the that's out of their control, I just wish there was a safeguard there. That if there was actively involved and actively working towards the end product, that that wouldn't apply to them.
Yeah, it's almost like a one size fits all, that's what I'm thinking too, I understand the whole concept of, you know, Emmett Ridge two, sitting there for how many years?
Well, obviously, there's a reason, and I'll just, you know, that Leslie felt very strong about this, like the town attorney. And this is what she does, and she's done it very well for many, many years with other municipalities. That I trust her recommendation, and if she strongly suggests that we keep it at three years, I have to have faith in that is the best thing and it's in the best interest of the town. I mean, I understand your concerns, I I don't try to minimize that at all, but I have faith in her and her recommendations. And there's a reason that she strongly suggests three years.
Well, then staff has to promise us that they're going to keep the ball rolling and not throw up a lot of roadblocks for people and get them on the agendas as soon as they can and 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 make sure, because there is, you know, there's a there's a timeframe out there now, so as long as we can do that, I'm good.
We never do, it's always out of our control with what's been going on, so we do our best, Zach does an outstanding job managing all these developments right now, so we will always do our best and and that's why we've been having two meetings a month, it's not because we want to, it's to keep the ball rolling for everybody. That's why I look so tired tonight. So yes, we will do our best.
And that's appreciated, Commissioner, thank you for weighing in with your rationale, that's greatly appreciated. We now turn to agenda item number three. Public hearing and potential approval of ordinance twenty one dash zero six for consideration. So I turn again to the language. At this time, we call for hearing the the meeting to consider proposed ordinance twenty one dash zero six has now started. We now turn to staff for their presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, now this public hearing was advertised in the Frederick News Post on June second, two thousand twenty one. Staff presented proposed ordinance twenty one dash zero six to the mayor and board of commissioners at their May third, two thousand twenty one regular meeting. The board voted to forward the proposed ordinance to the planning commission for their mandatory review. The the planning commission voted unanimously three to zero to recommend approval of proposed ordinance twenty one dash zero six at their meeting on May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one without comment. Commissioner Ritz abstained due to voting on the matter at tonight's meeting and one member was absent. We are now now asking for approval of proposed ordinance twenty one dash zero six after the conclusion of this public hearing. And Mr. President, that's the end of my public comment or my presentation.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions for staff from the board at this time?
I have no questions, I just wanted to point out, I know that we talked about this at the planning commission meeting, that the term tourist home could be implied as an Airbnb home, I know we had some discussion with that in the past and there was a little consternation regarding that and especially in the village zone, so I'm not discrediting this ordinance in any way that it's written at all, I I think it's 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 good that the additional definitions were clarified. Just that we might be revisiting that Airbnb situation in the near future.
Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm looking at where Mr. Ritz is referencing and it's, I see it in the first I guess stanza there page, the first page of this hotel means any building and then it continues on or tourist home. So does anyone else have a concern with that language, Mr. Ritz, did anybody on the commission suggest changing that or?
No, no, we we did have a discussion about Airbnb. Because, you know, motel, a hotel, a motel, a bed, a bed and breakfast, so they're regulated, whereas Airbnb is not, other than, you know, somebody from what I understand, I don't think we discussed this at the meeting, but from my understanding of it is, you know, you you got, you have that app and you you fill out a profile and then you have to I guess meet certain, there are requirements, but they it doesn't really fall under. I think there's some loopholes with other regulations.
You're correct, Mr. Ritz, there's state loopholes and the state legislator legislature really needs to address it, but that's a separate issue. So we we can't consider an Airbnb a hotel based on state law. Or a motel.
But it could could fall under tourists.
Correct, that's correct, and that's why it's excluded from the hotel and hotel definitions.
Okay, any other questions for staff related to this item from the board? Okay, hearing none. I'm sorry, Mr. Burns, go ahead, yes, sorry. We're having trouble hearing you.
In regards to what Mr. Ritz just said with state legislature legislation. Actually changing constantly, we can come back and address this at a later time if they change the rules and regulations on that, correct?
Mr. Burns, we we only heard part of that, I'm afraid, you broke up.
I I have full service, how about now?
Yes.
Okay, in regards to if state legislature does change the requirements for VRBO, Airbnb and things of that nature, this is something we can come back and readdress in regards to those situations, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir, any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, so I now turn to staff to find out, is there are there any public comments on this matter?
No, sir.
Terrific, okay, if no one has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed. All right, we now have an opportunity for final questions from the board for staff or discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on, and is there a motion now to end this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to end public hearing.
Thank you, sir, is there a second for Mr. Burns's motion?
I'll second that, that was Joe.
Thank you, motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you, the motion carries five to zero, we now turn to consideration of the item. So is there a motion to accept ordinance twenty one dash zero six as presented?
I'll make a motion.
See, I know I waited too long, Commissioner Burns, please continue, please continue.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty one dash zero six as presented.
Motion's been made by made by Commissioner Burns, is there a second?
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you, motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. And there are none against, okay, motion carries five to zero, thank you very much. Okay, we now turn to our next agenda item, item number four.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, this is a policy twenty one dash zero two, this is what we discussed earlier in our presentation for the park recreation and open space fee in lieu for consideration. So since ordinance twenty one dash zero five was approved, now the park recreation and open space fee in lieu is now via policy. So right now, currently as it stands, we do not have a fee in lieu, so something has to be approved tonight if you want to maintain that that fee, so this is what we're recommending based on the impact fee study. Thirty eight ninety eight per single family dwelling unit and two thousand sixty nine dollars per multifamily dwelling unit. Again, this is only the fee in lieu, this will not be charged to every new home coming into town, this is only for the developments that the board, the mayor and you know, developer have decided that it's in their best interest and the town's best interest not to have a development in that particular area. And instead, they're going to pay the fee in lieu, the town, then the town will increase our park capacity. Put a new playground or a new disc golf course, new playfield, etc. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, sir, are there any questions for staff at this time?
Hypothetical speaking. Hypothetical speaking, hypothetically speaking, if we did not pass this policy this evening, we, we did. What, what would that mean then? Then, then there's a fee in lieu and then a developer would have to build a park. Correct?
So it's kind of a gray area because the code is written that we do have a fee in lieu. However, it says it's set by uh ordinance policy resolution. So technically we don't have a fee in lieu amount. However, technically we're required to charge a fee in lieu per the code. So. You know, at the bare minimum, we request bringing it at least back to twelve hundred what it was, but staff recommends increasing it based on the scientific data. That uh Tischler Bees or Vice uh presented tonight.
Yeah, that was a lot of data. Um, I know Carl's off the call now. There was a lot of data. It was very hard. That was a very difficult presentation to, to. Follow.
Yeah, and we, we do apologize. Staff apologizes. Um, Cars or Carl is actually Carson's assistant. So we greatly apologize when Carson presented to the mayor, Kathy and I, you know, it was a great presentation. So we apologize for that presentation.
So basically, these are the, the amounts that, that the contractor is recommending that we charge for new development if we choose to go fee and lieu. Um, I know it was a lot of data and a lot of numbers being thrown around, but basically what it boils down to through all their studies and all their data and all their scientific. Uh, stuff. This is what they recommended that to meet um. The park needs, this is what we should be charging for fee and lieu for parks. For new development.
Okay, um, I, I think we have clarification from staff. Any other questions for staff from the board? Okay, so hearing none, is there a motion to uh accept? That's right, to approve policy P twenty one dash zero two park recreation and open space fee in lieu.
I make a motion to accept the, the policy of P dot twenty one dash oh two parks and recreation, open space fee in lieu.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Uh, motions made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone against, please say nay.
Nay, only for the reason I just don't like to triple a fee at one shot. I just think that's a lot of money to just to triple it all at one time.
The motion carries four to one. Commissioners O'Donnell, Sweeney, Ritz, Burns in favor. Commissioner Davis against. Thank you. We move to our next item. Uh, Mr. Davis, thank you for your rationale. That's appreciated. We turn to agenda item five. I'm sorry, it, item five was postponed. My apology. Return to agenda item six, approval of resolution twenty one dash zero two R. Community legacy facade improvement grant submittal authorization for consideration. Return to staff.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our yearly uh resolution. Um, the board's support and the mayor's support of applying for the community legacy grant. Which is a very successful uh program without, within the town. Uh, we are applying again for seventy five thousand dollars for the community legacy facade. Program. So if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept uh resolution number twenty one dash zero two R as presented?
Still moved.
Thank you. Uh, motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Uh, is there any further discussion? Um, I'll just throw in, thank you, staff. I think this is great for our community. Um, much appreciated. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And that's five, so we have no nays. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. If my mallet tonight sounds like a stapler, it's because it is. All right, we move on. To agenda item number seven. Approval, consideration of approval of resolution twenty one dash zero four our community's legacy, uh Emmitsburg restroom and concession stand building grant submittal authorization.
Yes, Ms. Shaw is going to take care of this agenda item.
Good evening, board. Um, so town staff is requesting the board approve resolution twenty one dash oh four tonight. If approved, this resolution would be used to apply for a hundred and sixty nine thousand in grant funds from DHCD community legacy. To construct a new bathroom and concession stand combo building and community park between the two ball fields. The building would be prefabricated in about twenty three feet by twenty six feet in size. And the total project cost estimated is three hundred sixteen thousand. As Mayor Briggs mentioned earlier tonight. We did get program open space funding and the amount of a hundred forty seven thousand to fund part of that um project amount. And so we're hoping to get the remaining, remaining funds through community legacy. Are there any questions?
Will this be a two-story bathroom or one story?
So we're proposing a one-story bathroom. About half the building would be a men and women's restroom with stalls in it. And then the other half would have a concession stand with the concession stand door and a sink and stuff.
And for clarity's sake, this would be located where in the park?
Between the two ball fields. If you, um, some commissioners might recall, there used to be a caboose back there. I think about fifteen, twenty years ago, I was told. And there's a sewer hookup that already exists.
Yeah, there's water to an electric.
Yeah, there's already water and electric nearby as Commissioner Sweeney mentioned. So we're hoping to put it in that same area.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have a question for Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Was this um, is this something the Parks Committee um proposed or kicked around?
Yes, we did talk about it at our walk through that park uh back in. Hmm, May, I guess, April, May, when we did the walk through the park and we told them there was something out there. As a matter of fact, they're the ones that suggested the uh concession stand. Part of it. It was just bathrooms to start with.
Yeah, staff, staff recommended bathrooms and then after discussions with Commissioner Davis, um. His committee and himself recommended adding the concession stand to it.
That's, that's great, great news. I like, I love to hear that when um. As a former parks, Parks and Rec um liaison, you know, and when everybody gets together, has some ideas and they come to fruition. That's, that's excellent. Thank you for that, that letting me know that.
I would imagine that we will not get the full amount from DCHD for a hundred and sixty nine thousand. So um, the mayor, I believe at his last POS meeting, I believe Commissioner Donald was there as well, that there should be additional monies. For park projects coming from the state um that will be eligible for. And then um, there'll always be the town match that uh the town will have to come up with, that will have to budget for. Um, and I think, I've, I think I spoke to Commissioner Davis about it, or if I hadn't, I'm going to, um, about the possibility of fundraising. To help cover some of the match that the town is going to be required to do. Um, something similar, uh, a plaque on the building. Um, similar to what was done at the bath house, but you know, from donors or such, but. Hopefully they give us all, but if not, there's just different options that we have.
And what would our, what would our part be again? How much?
Um, Matty, do you know the POS grant match is what, twenty five percent of the hundred and forty nine?
Yeah, so we got a hundred forty seven thousand and it would be twenty five percent of that would, we would be required to match.
And DCHD, there's no match, correct?
Correct.
Right. So twenty five percent of a hundred and fifty thousand is. Who's doing the math?
About, about thirty six thousand.
Yeah, we'll have a chicken barbecue. We can do.
It's gonna be a great project. I'm, I'm looking, I look forward to it. They put a lot into work. She turned this around really quick, so. Anxious to see.
Okay, any more questions for staff related to this? Okay, hearing none. Uh, is there a motion to? I'm trying to find the proper language here. To accept resolution improving the application and receipt of financing for community legacy projects. Emmitsburg restroom and concession stand building.
That's fine.
So move that word. Thank you. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Very swiftly, I might add. Thank you both. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, I'll just add again, thank you staff very much. These are great things. Uh, call to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. No nays, so the motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. We now turn to our next item. Which is setting our agenda for the next meeting, much of which has been set. Uh, staff, do we have any modifications to the?
I have a language change to agenda item number three and I have. One additional admin item, so if um. And Zach, the tentative item for the access agreement, that, that will definitely be on.
Uh, that's still tentative. We're, we're waiting to hear back from the county. Um, they're working on an easement right now. Um, sorry, an exhibit.
Right. We will not, I would go ahead and strike the approval of ordinance twenty one oh eight update impact fees for consideration. I don't believe that staff will be ready uh at that point. We're probably looking more towards August of September. On that item.
Okay.
So number three, the language needs to be amended to um approval of rudders. And east Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two. Deeds of easements and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements on behalf of the town for consideration.
Okay. So modified?
Yes, and then um we'll strike the last tentative item. And then. Letter B for admin business will be an update on the American Rescue Plan monies.
Terrific. Okay. So is there a motion to accept the agenda for the July twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting as modified?
I'll make.
Can we add one more?
Oh, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, go, yes, sir, Mr.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's good.
Yep, I brought it up earlier in my comments. Uh, can, can we, can we throw in the consideration of uh? Of the dedication of the Little League field number, what I want to say, number seven? The big one, yes.
I, I think we could, or we could put it as administrative business. Um, or consent agenda unless there um. Would there be a presentation with this, Mr. Davis? Do you feel like in, in the item?
No, uh, if it is, it would be real short. I think it'd be a quick thing that we should be able to throw through in no time. Quicker than, quicker than number eight would have been.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think the gravity of its importance definitely should make it an agenda item. So let's make that agenda item eight and that would be. Consideration of renaming and which field are we talking about? Or shall we just say a baseball field in um Memorial Park?
Yeah, it would be the one in Memorial.
Okay.
Yes.
And.
Number seven, field number seven by the end of mall.
Very, okay, so.
Other one's fine.
Anybody have any issues with that addition?
No, not at all.
Very good. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Um, yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there a motion to accept the July twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting as modified?
I'll make a motion to accept the July twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting as. The agenda for that meeting as modified.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we now turn to closing the meeting. Unless there's. Yes, sir, Mr. Brick. Yes, sir.
Uh, it's just with the uh president passing a uh federal, new federal holiday, uh, July. Uh, June nineteenth, I believe, uh, as a federal holiday. Uh, we were a little late in recognizing Bart Luther King. Day as a town holiday. Uh, somewhere, say August or September, I, I'd like to bring that back in here. Just so we, it's on our radar that that would be a, we'd uh, for consideration of the board, that uh, that will also be a little uh recognized by the town as a holiday. Thank you.
I have one. Um, this is community day is, community day is this Saturday. I hope everyone's coming and their families. Um, are we, are, are we riding on a farm? Is the commissioners riding on anything for the? I didn't know if you had a five hundred on fire truck or not available. I have a hay wagon that we can ride on. If you want. I remember. Mister's going to be here. I do have a wagon we can ride on.
I remember. Great, great. And you will be up on Mountain View Road?
We will, yes, we will be getting on it. Uh, actually you can get on in the park, but hay wagon will be riding all through the park all day long. And there's a history tour ride too with another wagon.
Specifically for the parade though, we just, we would meet up with you up on Mountain View Road.
That's fun.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
We, we've taken several phone calls in the office. What time is the parade lineup and what time?
Four thirty is the parade lineup. Five, five o'clock is the parade.
And where are they lining up?
Mountain View Road.
Right in front of now.
From the doughboy, from the doughboy back.
Okay.
At Kathy's house, actually.
And I'm sorry, I have something to, to piggyback on there with. Um, at three thirty, Senator Huff is coming to town. Uh, for a, a little meet and greet and I think it would be great that if we could get out to thank him uh for the uh, the funding that he, he got to town. He's coming up because he's going to be uh also riding in the parade. Uh, so we're going to try to put something together. Um, I'm, I'm asking this, whether we can do something here on this property or should we not be here on this property since it's county property?
I don't see a problem. I mean, I, I mean, I understand he's running for county executive, but I don't see a problem with um him being allowed to host something on town property.
Yeah, we were going to do it at the activities building. I was going to pay rent down there, which I don't have a problem doing, but I felt there'd be more people up here. We don't want to pull people away from here. This is where the center of things would be. So we'll keep him uh close here to the, to the building somewhere. I'll get with the Lions Club or the Heritage people and see where we can set that up, but he'll be here through, from three thirty to four thirty. Then he'll go to the parade.
Great, okay. All right, uh, any other comments or is it okay to call the vote?
Can I, can I, one question to Ms. Willetts and Mr. Golden. I know they didn't have comments earlier uh in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Um, have either of you heard from anything from Verizon or any of those cell providers about losing a tower recently or anything of that nature? I know a lot of people in town have commented that they're struggling with uh cell service on Route fifteen and in the surrounding areas as well. I don't know if it came across your desk from any of the cell, cell providers or anything like that.
I, I have not heard anything, Zach.
I have not either.
Very cool. I did, it's, it's just been interesting, you know, traveling up and down fifteen. Uh, it's like calls dropping, everything of that nature. And a lot of people have uh noticed the same thing. So I didn't know if there was something that had come across anybody's desk that they're like, oh yeah, we just dropped the tower.
So what we can do is I can have Terry tomorrow reach out. I think we have a contact and just inquire.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Burns, just a hypothetical, that could also be related to federal activity.
I, I kind of figured that because it's right around the Camp David exits and things of that nature. Um, that's been dropping and then parts of, parts of Emmitsburg, depending on where you were as well. So I wasn't positive, but uh. Parts of Emmitsburg, depending on where you were as well. So I wasn't positive, but uh I, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other comments or questions before we move to close? Okay, um is there a motion to close the meeting?
I moved to close the meeting.
Is there a second for Mr. Sweeney's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motions have been paid by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns and others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.